Okay, we have a rush for the end, right? Okay, we're going to get started. So this session is on technology and jobs in Asia. And the centerpiece is actually a recently released report by the Asian Development Bank on technology and jobs in Asia. And I have had a partial involvement in the project, kind of from the outside, and I thought it would form the nice basis for a session here at the Jobs and Development Conference. So we have three speakers, and as in all the sessions, we'll have 30 minutes each. So without any further ado, Samir, do you want to go first?
Thank you, Albert. So as Albert pointed out, we recently came out with the Asian Development Outlook. It's a flagship report by the ADB. So in the report, actually, we focused this year that the theme chapter was on technology and jobs. So today I'll be presenting some of the main findings from that chapter. And second, I will talk about a background paper that is still a work in progress, but some of the descriptive trends that we came from that, we prepared from that background paper was also used in the report. First, you know, I mean, of course, this whole thing about technology and how technology is displacing labor has been in the news lately. And one of the things that we wanted to do at the ADB is we wanted to sort of shed light on this from the Asian perspective, right? So one of the things that we start at the outset of the report is by pointing out that increases in labor productivity in Asia has been very important for the region's growth, economic prosperity, job creation. So this is key, right? And here, technology has been very important for the region. So now, because the talk of AI and big data, there's worry that they might lead to job losses. And this is actually because of the studies that have come out of McKinsey and World Bank to some extent as well, but now they have tempered their projections a bit. But the president, World Bank President, has been going around talking about some of those numbers. So we just kind of wanted to, you know, provide our insights into this debate. And just before I start, you know, I wanted to say that we are in the Philippines, we're in Manila. And in Manila now, all the talk of business process outsourcing being sort of the whole industry disappearing because of AI and big data is in the news all the time because of service delivery automation, which has really improved tremendously over the last few years. And hence, this was also timely in that respect, right? But with BPO, yes, the call center jobs will be disappearing, but as it turns out, there will be other types of jobs that will be created in the BPOs. So basically, that also, you know, that was one of our case studies for this project. Before I start, I kind of wanted to present this framework to you all. It's, of course, to do this properly, you need to write a proper model, but I just wanted to first put this out there that how technology affects jobs, there are many different channels, right? This is something that's very important to keep in mind. What has happened, for the most part, is the displacement effect is where most people focus on when they're talking about how technology might impact the labor market. But what we point out is that there are other effects that are equally important, if not more important. Even if you just focus on the within former industry, the reinstatement effect, this is from Asimoglu and Restrepo. This whole framework is actually based on Asimoglu, Restrepo, and Autor's 2015 JEP paper. Basically, we tried to put it together in a flowchart. And so there are different effects, right? If you just focus on employment, if you see that with other effects, actually, the literature says employment is supposed to go up. So that's something that is relatively straightforward to see if you look at this literature. But the wages is a complicated story. As it has been evident during our discussions all morning and during the day, wage is a complicated story here. Even so, so we can't really say what, how technology will impact labor market in sort of a one, you know, this is what's going to happen, right? So it's important to keep this in mind. The four things that, the four main messages that we come out in this report is, first, new technologies only automate some of the tasks of a job. This is like preaching a choir, because most of you are labor economists. For you, it's obvious. But actually, as it turns out, for the policy audience, this is not obvious, right? When they see news saying 70% of jobs will disappear, they don't think, oh, job is comprised of tasks, maybe I'll still keep my job because some of my tasks will be automated. No, they don't think like that, right? So this is something that we point out in the report. The other thing is technical feasibility doesn't necessarily mean economic feasibility. This is sort of the whole thing of Frey and Osborne, the famous paper, where they talk about technical feasibility of automating different jobs. And this is something we delve into by saying, look, it's not feasible in our part of the world, at least. And rising income and demand, this is something that we basically argue that because of Asia getting richer, that this will offset the displacement effect due to new technology. And my colleague, Elizabetha, who will be presenting second, will actually present the background paper that contributed to this main finding. And then, lastly, we also talk about new occupation and industries that emerge due to new technology. That's usually hard to imagine beforehand. And I want to start with this relatively simple, most of you probably have seen this framework, it's from Autor. But going from the bottom to the top here, those bars and colors is from Frey and Osborne. It's basically the technical feasibility of automation, automating different tasks in different occupations, right? So here, one thing we all know is this, those guys at the top, top right, those guys have always been sort of at the front line of facing labor displacing technology, right? So that's, this has been taking place for the longest time in the manufacturing sector for the most part. What has made news is basically this quadrant right here on the left is these are routine cognitive jobs. That's where, because of artificial intelligence and big data, the worry is some of those jobs could be at risk as well. And these guys, they tend to complement, their jobs tend to complement with technology, so they're not as worried, shouldn't be as worried. And then this, for the non-routine manual workers there, of course, the relationship between labor-saving technology and jobs is not clear, because at least the technology hasn't gotten to a point where they're going to replace hairdressers, and it's economically feasible, right? So this is something important to keep in mind when we're talking about. It's a very simple framework. I'll sort of go with the disaggregated framework later on, but this is something we use as a motivation at the very beginning of our report. One thing that we point out by looking at the industrial robot data for Asia is that industrial robots tend to be concentrated in capital-intensive sectors like electrical and electronics, automotive and metal, and in industries, in sectors such as textiles, food and beverage, you don't see much of that happening, right? So this is robot sales in 2015, and the employment share out of total manufacturing also in 2015. But when we actually take out China from this electrical and electronics and automotive from the labor share, that those bars go much lower. Actually, China employs a lot of people even in capital-intensive sectors, right? So when you actually exclude China, you even see a starker picture when you look at this graph. This is something that, this actually, so basically, here, what we're doing, the size of the bubbles are your robot stock in that sector. On the Y-axis, the routine task intensity, this is from the OECD, Lucas is here, but I think it's from one of his papers. So this is basically routine task intensity in these different sectors. What we did was that we looked at that, and we looked at wages in Asia, and we looked at robot stock in particular sectors in Asia, and we tried to sort of put this together. One thing to, this is, I love this chart, because it shows that if you look at food and beverage and tobacco and textile apparel leather, the routine intensity of tasks there is actually relatively high. But the robot sales or robot stock there is very, very small, because maybe it doesn't make sense to actually automate those tasks, right? That's what it's essentially capturing. On this side, the wages are higher, on this side, the wages are lower, right? So this also kind of goes with what we think, in capital-intensive sectors, workers are making better wages than in labor-intensive sectors. So another, one of the messages we have, the third one, is on rising demand offsetting displacement due to automation. This is something Elizabetha will get into a little bit later. Basically, we look at this from a GVC framework, and here, on the left-hand side, this is technology in the GVC context and also within-country efficiency improvements. That leads to a decline in employment of both routine and non-routine-type jobs. As it turns out, because of rising income, that takes care of that displacement, right? This is something that we point out, and the paper actually gets into this in great detail, you'll see it in a bit. The other piece of work that we have done for this report is looking at new occupations, new occupations and new industries. This is an ongoing work. We basically, probably, some of you know, a paper by Jeffrey Lin, who basically counted occupation titles in the US. And he merged that with economic census data to sort of come up with how many people are employed in those new occupations and new work. Here, we only counted the titles. We figure out what share are new titles. And here you see, just to get the gist of it, actually, most of the new titles are in non-routine cognitive category. We have only looked at three countries so far, India, Malaysia, and the Philippines, and between these two time periods, depends on basically whether or not we have national classification of occupations to do this work, and not all countries have that. These three countries do, and we have added two countries now in the sample, Indonesia and Vietnam. We haven't merged this with the employment data just yet, but we actually went with this in the report by showing there are new titles being created in non-routine cognitive category. But as it turns out, if you look at the top half, even in routine manual and routine cognitive, there are jobs that are still being created in Asia. One of the things we get into is the negative consequences for some workers, because of course, at the end of the day, the story is not all positive, even for our region, even though the region is getting richer, we have some negative story to tell. The first one is basically, of course, when you look at the use of robots and look at the type of employment, routine versus non-routine, you do see that routine employment is usually associated with decline in, uses of robot is also with decline in routine employment, and in case of non-routine employment, you see an increase. When you do this with an econometric analysis, you also kind of see the same story, going from top-left to right. Top-left overall employment, the picture is not that clear. When you go to the routine employment, you see that actually, yes, decline in, with robot adoption is associated with decline in routine employment, you do see this. And when you actually kind of go with those four categories, again, the story becomes a bit clearer. But then, one thing that's interesting, actually, is that when you differentiate developed and developing economies, in case of developing economies, the effect is not as strong. So, and another thing we did, this is, I'm going to get into this in the second half, because this is from the background paper, where we look at increase in non-routine cognitive jobs is evident across Asia. This is based on the work we are doing using PACC, I'll talk about it in a second. Here, just wanted to show this relatively straightforward chart that looks at non-routine cognitive and then the manual, the jobs that are intensive in these tasks. As it turns out, of course, the ones in non-routine cognitive have gone up in Asia, and the one intensive in manual tasks have gone down. And as it turns out, wages have increased more in non-routine cognitive jobs compared to manual intensive jobs. And we leave, we sort of end the report with this policy message, where we actually say that the response to technology from the government's side has to sort of focus on a few key things, education and training, favorable labor regulation, social protection, tax policies. That's what we sort of focus on in the report. Now, let me talk about the ongoing work that, on this technology and task content of occupations. Here, basically, we started this, there was a nice session earlier today on polarization. So we started this work actually being motivated by whether or not there is job polarization in Asia. That's how we started this. So let me show you some pictures, actually, from Asia. So here, this is, we are basically replicating Autor and Dorn, the famous paper that you all probably know. Look at the top, so these are basically, okay, just a quick thing on data, labor force surveys. So the initial year is 2000, final year is 2012. We went by whatever labor force surveys we had available for those particular countries, and these are the ones that we had that we could work with. So in case of India, you do see the red line is on wages and the blue one is on employment. And the wages are proxy for skill. So if you look at that, maybe there is some evidence of polarization, right? If you look at that picture. And same thing with Indonesia. And both for the rest of the countries, I'm not so sure. For example, I don't know what's happening in Thailand, for example. Thailand has some interesting data issues, but anyway, so this is a picture that we get, some evidence of polarization, maybe the, because of the trend we see for wages, maybe income inequality is going to go up. So there are some implications from this, right? So what we decided to do after this, okay, so let's look at, let's come up with some kind of a task intensity of occupations in Asia and try to make sense of how technology could have an effect in labor market outcomes in our part of the world. So here, as a lot of you already know, OECD has this database called, is PACC database that we, that a lot of the presenters have talked about already. So these are publicly available, so we have used this. What we have basically done is, well, most of you know that the OECD also, the covers, besides the background information, it's got what do people do at work, right? That's the nice thing about this database. What we have done here is basically, what we did was we assigned those survey questions into different categories. We have our own five categories. Six, we started with, but we went with five in the end. And we constructed the indicators by occupation and industry, and then we merged that with Asian labor force surveys. And then we looked at trends in Asia, and then we sort of also did something comparing with the OECD, how does Asia look like, right? In terms of the categories, so we have social interaction and influencing is our first category. And here, frequency of non-routine interactive tasks, I mean, the examples are influencing and advising other people, teaching, giving speeches, these are some of the tasks that is in that category. And for cognitive non-routine is basically writing letters, articles, preparing charts and graphs, some of the tasks that are included in this, and so on and so forth, right? Cognitive routine, these are basically your, you could even think of it as, some of the outsourcing jobs in Asia are, a lot of it are cognitive routine jobs. So this is how we have classified this, and one thing we've added is the ICT. You'll notice that the use of ICT at work is one of the categories we have added here. Not surprisingly, when we look at the one-digit occupation code and look at those broad occupation categories, what you see is that, of course, in occupations that are going to the right, elementary occupations, where you see the manual work comprises a large share of the tasks. One thing you'll note is the autonomy, this is the sixth category that we ended up dropping in the end, because there is, of course, first of all, it's not, we're not sure how, sorry, go ahead.
What would you have?
This is OECD, this is OECD average, yeah. We haven't gotten to the--
Oh, no, 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 it's the OICD.
Yeah, yeah. This is OECD. Right now, I'm still with the OECD, I haven't gone to Asia yet. So, yeah, so this is where you don't see much variation across the occupation groups. So hence, we, I mean, first of all, that's one. The second is, I'm not sure how technology affects, whether or not people are doing autonomous tasks. So we, in the end, we dropped this category. So basically, then we come up with a task intensity scores using PACC based on those five categories. Here, basically, simply speaking, the occupation industry dummies here, the gamma there is, becomes our task intensity score, that's what we went with. And then, what we did was that for each occupation-industry combination, we used that and then we mapped that onto our labor force service in Asia. And labor force service, we have, we have these countries in our sample, India, Indonesia, Philippines, Thailand, and Vietnam. And the time period varies, Vietnam is the shortest, Indonesia is the longest. And what we did was we sort of divided them into high intensity versus low intensity for the initial year. So here, if it's above the average, it would be high intensity, and below the average would be low intensity. Let me show you some pictures based on that. So this is for Asia now. So here, this picture is annual employment growth by task intensity. If you look at the top one, the top one is for all workers, and of course, a lot of you would know by looking at this, is that all workers include self-employed as well, besides the wage workers, right? So hence, the picture is a bit different if you look at just wage workers. When you look at the top picture, you see that the high-intensive jobs in non-routine, jobs that are high-intensive in non-routine cognitive tasks, there the growth has been higher than in low-intensive tasks. So that you see, and in some countries, actually, it's even negative, you see that. One thing, on the right-hand side, on the manual job, the manual category, there you see that jobs that are low-intensive in manual actually have increased faster than the one in high-intensive manual. This is also to be expected in some ways. And also, as I think this morning Peter mentioned this, and we had the same issue here, we can't really differentiate manual between routine and non-routine with this. So hence, this is, might be also capturing both routine and non-routine, that's something might be happening there. When you just look at the wage workers, picture is similar, it's not as stark, but you can still see the difference between high-intensive and low-intensive. The growth in high-intensive and non-routine cognitive, social interaction, ICT category, and in case of manual, the opposite. This picture is showing basically the same thing. Here, we look at change in high-intensive jobs, basically, we're looking at the high-intensive, how the growth in jobs with high intensity of these tasks in comparison to overall employment growth. Okay. So this is showing the same picture as before, but let me show you this one on wages. This is kind of an interesting picture, where we see that wages in jobs that are high-intensive in non-routine cognitive, ICT, and other categories, social interaction, they have increased faster than in low-intensive jobs. Philippines is an exception in many ways. Philippines, you see at the bottom, here, we only see non-routine cognitive category where the high-intensive jobs, the wages have gone, they have increased. And elsewhere, the wages have actually declined. Here, actually, Philippines, the period we look at in the Philippines is 2001, 2013, those are the two labor force surveys we had. And during that period, actually, wages did decline in the Philippines. And we did verify this with the Philippine Statistical Authority, and as it turns out, that's what did take place, hence the anomaly there. So let me actually just kind of, I mean, here, we did this, we did some simple regressions, but I kind of wanted to show something else here. Basically, what we did, this is, this was done for the report, so it probably wouldn't be in the paper, but we compare Asia with the OECD to see how Asia looks like compared to the OECD average, right? And not surprisingly, you'll see that OECD, in terms of the jobs that are intensive in manual tasks, of course, there are more of those in Asia than in the OECD average. But then, you know, there's some interesting things happening in Indonesia, for example. For the jobs that are intensive in social interaction, and also in routine cognitive, actually, it's better than, slightly higher than the OECD average. So to conclude, and this is ongoing work, you can clearly tell, we're still sort of making sense of this data, but one of, some of the things we can say just from this is that there has been an employment shift towards jobs that are intensive in non-routine tasks. This is relatively, we see this based on this analysis. And also, these jobs tend to pay better wages as well. And the one thing that we find that kind of goes against this task bias, technical change hypothesis, where basically, the routine cognitive jobs have actually gone up, we see that there are also, you know, the increase in routine cognitive jobs is also there in case of Asia. And one explanation that we kind of provide is, maybe it's because of rising incomes, that's something that Elizabetha will get into in her presentation. And that's it, really. Thank you.
This is the only mic we have, right? Questions?
No, I have, yeah, I mean, there was a lot of stuff. So with the routine, with the increasing routine cognitive, I think that the, you mentioned BPO earlier, and I think if you were able, maybe you're doing that in the report, if you could, if you were able to put a number on the job creation in routine cognitive that could be attributed to the BPO outsourcing, I think that would be very interesting, because that's something similar that we try to, that's something similar that we've seen in Central and Eastern Europe, that at some point, the region was like the largest recipient of BPO FDI in the world, like a couple of years ago, and become a hub for accounting centers, competence centers, and so on, so on, so on. And the routine jobs were, or routine cognitive jobs have been growing over the last 15 years. However, we're not really able to, you know, in the labor force survey, you cannot really identify the BPO, you cannot really identify the FDI firms, and so on. But I think that that is something that could be really interesting to kind of complement the picture we have of task and technology, which in my opinion is exceedingly influenced by the US-based narrative. Most of the papers are on the US, and there is a lot of talk that, you know, routine are declining, but perhaps actually, there is this interaction between technology and globalization, that the technology allows some of the routine work to be offshore, routine cognitive. And, you know, so putting some number on that, I think, would be really, really interesting.
Thank you. Is there something you can say about the labor supply? Is the share of high-skill workers increasing in these countries, which are usually those better prepared for performing non-routine tasks? Or are these countries improving the educational system?
Any other comments, first round? Okay, why don't I give it back to--
So on BPO, actually, we did, we did a case study in BPO, but as you rightly said, when you look at the labor force survey, it's really hard to figure out which, to add up the BPO numbers is really difficult, but when we go with the industry estimates or the Philippine Statistical Authority estimates, and you get different set of numbers on that. But, so that was, that was a difficulty, but you can't, and the thing about the routine cognitive jobs within the BPO, there it's hard to, we haven't gotten to that point yet, because even to get hold of reliable employment numbers for BPO is already difficult, at least in the case of Philippines, just using labor force surveys, that's one thing. The one, that's a very good question, actually, I didn't present that, there was, we actually also looked at the education levels, average education by those, some of those categories that we have, and you do see that the people doing the non-routine jobs are better educated, generally speaking, and not surprisingly, right? And this is something that, we just have four education categories, actually, in the end, it's not that decided, but yeah, you do, you can't say that based on the data, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on the first paper? Okay. Do you have a minute, anything else you want to add?
So basically, the thing is, one of the work we're doing on occupation titles is something that I really liked that piece also, we have not, we're not done yet doing that work. I think that's something that I personally think is promising, because there's, you know, when we think of technology, how it affects the labor market outcomes, you know, everyone talks about new occupation, new industries, let's look at what has happened in the past and make sense of some, what could happen in the future, right? So this is, that's why the paper by Jeffrey Lin is, it's in review of economic statistics for a reason, because I think it's a really nice piece of work that he did. And I think it's important for us to do more of that, at least in developing countries, because it's all US-based, as you rightly said, yeah.
Okay. Next presentation is by Elizabeth.
Okay, we got a dead pointer, so I'm going to have to do things old-school. So this paper that I'm about to present to you is being motivated by work that by now you guys are very familiar with, the famous paper by Autor and Dorn, which showed that there was polarization in the US labor market, so that there was an erosion of middle-skilled jobs. And another important paper by Frey and Osborne that talked about 47% of jobs in the US at risk of automation. So of course, at the Asian Development Bank, our member countries started asking us, what about us? Should we be worried? What can we expect? So this project is one of the projects that actually intended to answer this question. And in particular, what we want to do is provide evidence on how employment is responding to changes in technology. But perhaps one important element that we add with this analysis is looking at technology within the global value chain. If you know a little bit about Asia, you know that participation in global value chains has been a boon for the economic growth of many of these countries. And therefore, looking at the technological adoption decision within the global supply chain is a very important addition. Now, just in case, global value chain, global supply chain, trading value-added, vertical specialization, offshoring, there are a lot of terms out there, they are all referring to the same thing, that is, different stages of the production process for a given good or service that are located in different country. So when we talk about global value chains, or production chains, or supply chains, that's what we are talking about, okay? Now-- Now, a good example, especially if you're looking at Asia, is the garment supply chain. You have cotton that is cultivated, for example, in the United States of America. It can be cultivated maybe in India. Perhaps the spinning and knitting and weaving takes place in Indonesia. And then, the actual cutting, sewing and printing on the garments can happen in China. And then, logistics and warehousing companies can deliver their finished product to retail stores all over the world, okay? So let's talk about the technology adoption decision along the global supply chain, and let's talk about what other alternatives producers who have a segmented, fragmented production have. So let's begin with task relocation. So let's say that if there is a Chinese garment manufacturer that decides to outsource some, for example, routine jobs to Cambodia. So what is the employment effect of this decision? That assuming that the labor requirement to carry out this task in China or in Cambodia is exactly the same, you have workers' jobs disappear in China and appear in Cambodia, right? That's task relocation. Now, let's say instead, and I did this like in a brute force way, I just slapped a fancy cutter up there, let's say that now the same Chinese garment manufacturer implements these laser-oriented cutting machines, which literally replaces a number of jobs. Now, that would be technology within the GVC. So whenever we think about the technological adoption decision along the value chain, we have to remember that producers don't just have the option to adopt technology, they also have the option to relocate production. Another important issue that we have to remember is that technology, and especially the Fourth Industrial Revolution, has created a lot of concern in our developing member countries, that there will be reshoring of production. They have been benefiting from offshoring, and now because of technology, they fear reshoring of production back to the countries of origin, which would be a huge loss of jobs. So by monitoring task relocation in this framework, we can monitor whether this massive reshoring is actually happening or not. Okay, so for time's sake, I will skip the literature review. I would just want to quickly point out that this paper tries to contribute to a literature that is relatively recent, in all trying to look into the relationship between technology and jobs. And how do we contribute? Well, this paper has two parts, but probably since Samir has already covered the part of part two anyway, I will focus on part one. We will perform something that's called structural decomposition analysis, which is based on the multir regional input-output tables. So this is an input-output methodology, okay? And we will do this because we want to identify the changes in occupational labor demand associated with technological change, task relocation, but also income and other factors. What are we going to find? We are going to find that employment level, when we look at employment level, so literally the number of jobs, what we are going to find is that technology within the GVC is associated with decreases in the levels of employment. Routine, non-routine, it's an ambiguously decreasing effect. Task relocation, on the other hand, is quite smaller and mixed. What that means for our Asian member countries is that there is not, there was not, at least in the period under consideration, this massive job losses from reshoring of production because of technology. And then, another important finding is that increased demand for goods and services, which Samir was referring to earlier as income, so an increase in demand for goods and services is associated with increases in labor demand, so increases in jobs, that are more than compensate, more than compensate for the decreases in employment that are associated with technology. Now, when we look at employment composition, so we are talking about share of routine, cognitive, routine, manual, non-routine, cognitive, and so on and so forth. What we find is that technology within the GVC is associated with an increase in non-routine employment shares. Nothing shocking so far, right? Nothing, no shocking results. And task relocation is again much smaller and mixed. So nothing is really, no revolution has happened in that period of time under consideration in terms of massive amounts of jobs leaving Asia and going to North America, Germany, and other developing, other developed economies. So of course, input-output methodologies have their advantages and their disadvantages. What are the advantages of an input-output methodology? That we can perform a macroeconomic analysis of a global value chain. So the idea of global value chain is that production is fragmented along many, many countries. So this particular methodology allow us to perform a macroeconomic analysis. This is something that adheres to national account, series of gross output and value-added unemployment. So this is, this is quite handy. Now, on the other hand, though, what are the disadvantages of this? This is a demand-based framework. Wow, I have remembered that we got stairs here. Maybe it just shouted me, stairs, stairs. Okay, so it's a demand-based framework, and so supply effects are not modeled. So someone was asking before about labor supply, well, we cannot look at labor supply in this framework. And also, this is not a fully specified computable general equilibrium model, and so we don't have interaction prices, quantities, but we do have a Leontief type of production where we can, we can, these fixed proportions of inputs that are used to produce a certain good can change over time. Now, the structural decomposition analysis will take the overall change in employment in the period between 2005 and 2015, and decompose it into three components. Changes in employment within the global value chain, changes in employment between the global value chains, and income. So what is this between global value chains? It signifies that consumer preferences change over time. So one moment, consumers demand a lot of electronics. Another moment, maybe they reduce their demand for electronics and they want more clothes, or the other way around. So whenever consumer demand changes, alters across GVCs, that has implications on jobs. Now, within GVCs, that's what we are interested in. We are going to look at technology within the GVC, task relocation, and also a country-level measure of efficiency. And finally, the third element is income. We have already discussed that consumer demand for quantity of goods and services also has an implication on jobs. So this is total demand for goods and services, and this is your composition of demand, okay? So far, so good? So this is what the, very quickly, the model look like. We have a production function of a GVC new, which is fixed proportions of all the tasks that have to be carried out to be able to complete the good. And if tasks are perfectly complement, again, then you need a fixed proportion of each task to complete your output, to do one unit of output. Now, each country contributes a fraction of, to a specific task TJ, and the fraction can be zero if a country does not participate in a specific task along a specific value chain. And then, each task has a production function, a specific production function in country C. Now, I want to point out to you that technology enters into this framework in three separate places. At the top, you have the GVC production function, so the way, the specific way we combine each of these tasks to create our final output, that's one form of technology. Technology enters, again, the production function here, this is your run-of-the-mill total factor productivity, and then this is your task production function, because a specific task can be, can be carried out using different combination of inputs. So you have three different points in which technology enters the framework, and I've already said that. Now, with occupational, when we introduce occupational labor demand, we have to make two assumptions. One is that we have a one-to-one mapping between occupations and tasks. So basically, an increase by one unit of a task is an increase of one, by one unit of labor demand. And then, the Leontief production function, which is typical of an input-output methodology. And then, it's going to mean that the demand for task J in country C by GVC new is also the demand for occupation J in country C by GVC new. And then, we can explore, express labor demand in efficiency units, simply, this is simply some playing around with the, with the equations. And again, how do we decompose that? Well, by multiplying and dividing by the same thing. So we take our occupational labor demand, we multiply and demand for, for the GSC share, and we multiply and divide for world income. And so you have three components right there. The first multiplier there is your within GVC, the second is your between GVC, and the third one is your world income. Now, the next step is to further decompose our within GVC component into three components, our technology within GVC, that I just quickly exemplified with the, with the example of the textile industry, then your task relocation, and then your country-level efficiency. And this is done, again, as you can see, it's a matter of multiplying and dividing by the same thing to obtain the three different, so this is really an accounting exercise that you're looking at. And so you've got, this, by multiplying and dividing, you get, you get your three components, your total factor productivity, your GVC technology, and your task relocation. We have one last decomposition to do, and it's to take income and decompose it into own country and rest of the world. Why do we care about that? Because we want to know if the demand for goods and services that is driving employment in developing Asia is domestic or foreign. So if jobs in developing Asia depend on demand generated abroad, or they are also depending on demand generated domestically. And this is where we will find, yes, this is summation, this just summation exercise to split the domestic from the rest of the world component. So this is, we are going to use the ADB multir regional input-output tables, and we are going to, we are going to focus on wealth developing Asian economies, and we are going to focus on the period between 2005 and 2015, and we are going to display the price of 2,000 levels. Why would we do that? Because we want to make sure that the changes in employment are not responding simply to changes in our food prices, okay? And of course, for the employment data.
Please, please check your microphone.
I think it's good enough, okay. It's not like my voice doesn't carry or anything, guys. All right. And then, we need labor force surveys or population censuses to get employment data. So this is what an input-output table looks like. You've got the, this first part over here, this is a super simplified version, in which you only have three countries, China, India, and the Philippines. All the others don't exist. And we, and you only have three, I mean, we only show three industries, cotton, yard manufacturing, and textile manufacturing. So you can see, this, this big rectangle over here represent output for intermediate consumption. So this is output from industries in the PRC in India and Philippines that feeds into industries in other countries or in the same country. This other part here shows you output for final consumption, households, government, and investment. And this, this vector over here is your total gross output, it's the same as this. And this vector is obviously your value-added. Now, I am going to skip these animations for the sake of time. Perhaps this one is important. This is how we introduce the employment information in the input-output table. So you have total employment by industry, by country, and then of which, routine and non-routine, and we can bring in the, three minutes already? All right, guys, I'm going to have to speed up like crazy now, eh? Sorry. So this is the decomposition for the agricultural sector, and as you can see, this is your technology within GVC and your country-level productivity, ambiguously negative, associated with decreases in employment. This is your task relocation, which is mixed. Just, I want to show you that the range is not the same, so it looks the same size, but it actually is not. And then you have, again, both domestic income and rest of the world income, which is very large positive increases in employment. I can show you manufacturing, which tells you the same exact thing. I can show you services. Now, services is interesting, because we've got two interesting outliers here. You've got the Philippines, and you've got your Vietnam over there. Now, the Philippines, what we are seeing is that the growth of the business services industry, in particularly, in particular, you were mentioning BPO before, seem to have stimulated demand for jobs. And the same in Vietnam, the ICT revolution of Vietnam seem to also have been associated with an increase in demand for jobs. And for the Philippines, for task relocation, we are not quite sure what's going on. We see huge decreases in employment in real estate. So we are discussing with our colleagues, who are specialists of the Philippine economy, to understand what's going on there. And this is the all industry combined. Now, the next thing that we did, we actually broke it down into routine cognitive, non-routine, routine manual, non-routine cognitive, sorry, routine cognitive and routine manual. So the non-routine is blue, and the routine is orange. So again, manufacturing shows you an ambiguous loss of jobs, task relocation is again, a little bit all over the place. And when we go to services, again, we have the same two outliers. We've got our Philippines, and we've got our Vietnam. And as you can see, the jobs that seek to be benefiting the most from this are non-routine jobs, okay? Now, for the sake of time, I would just skip the slides on the shares, the employment shares. Perhaps I can just show you the non-routine cognitive, the share of non-routine cognitive occupations in blue, and as you can see, technological advancement is associated with an increase in the share of non-routine jobs. And again, task relocation, it's really, it's a little bit all over the place. So how do we conclude? We conclude by saying that technology along the GVC has been associated with a decrease in both routine and non-routine jobs, when we talk about levels, and an increase in non-routine employment shares. Also, our analysis of task relocation has shown two important things. Number one, that this massive reshoring of jobs to, back to the countries that have originally offshored has not happened in the period 2005 and 2015. But of course, this doesn't mean that it's not going to happen in the future. We are going to have to continue to monitor this trend. Second thing also about task relocation is that, let me just bring you back one second to this. So this, this mess that you see over here actually makes a lot of sense if you, if you connect this with the information on foreign direct investment. So you know that the share of Asian, foreign direct investment coming into Asia is, was 55% in 2016. So it's Asian countries investing in other Asian countries. So what you're seeing here, especially if you combine it with what Samir also showed you before, when you take all 12 countries together, task relocation is moderately positive. But when you unpack it, you can see all these interesting dynamics going on. And this is really these Asian countries investing in other Asian countries. So no reshoring, at least not in this period, but a lot of dynamism within Asia. And then, another important point from this, and then I conclude, is that there is this rising Asian middle class that is demanding goods and services, as opposed to increasingly saturated markets in places like Western Europe and North America, and they are driving job growth in the region. And we haven't even scratched the surface in terms of the potential that these consumer markets have. in terms of the potential that these consumer markets have. So thank you very much for your attention. And if you have any questions, now would be the time.
So we have time for a few questions. Are there any? Well, I think it's really interesting to bring the global value chains to the task-demand outcomes.
I don't have a question. Just a comment. I think the most interesting finding is this last one out here, that, you know, when you unpack it, you're discovering that there's all this intra-Asian activity, which is maybe keeping the region buoyant. So I think that's, I think, a really, really, really interesting.
I'm kind of surprised how strong are the, this income, let's say, effects. And I'm wondering, like, so the, are you using the Leontief function as the, is this the Leontief model, right? So when you enter this technology, the technology reduces prices. And then in the Leontief model, you know, if prices decline by 8%, it basically translates to a huge demand increase for this particular product. So I'm wondering whether the strong income effect is actually not driven by Leontief. And then, you know, it can be kind of overestimated because, well, if these products were produced to a large extent or have been produced for exports, then if their prices decline, maybe not necessarily the consumption increases so much that it actually counterbalances the decline due to technology.
Thank you for your comment. This is very important. Two points on this, maybe. You guys can hear me in the back without the microphone?
No, you need it. We're being live.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Sorry. Two items, two elements. Number one, I mentioned this in passing. We actually have deflated all the multirigional input-output tables. The prices are deflated to 2,000 levels. This makes sure that when you are looking at these, let's call them "effects" in air quotes, they are not being driven by changes in prices. So we have removed that. But there is an important item that I think I might have forgotten to mention, that this is a cetace paribus kind of analysis. So when you are looking at your income effect, you are holding everything constant. When you're looking at your technology effect, you're holding everything else constant. So you really have your worst-case scenarios of everything up there. So this is why your income effects look so huge, because everything else is being held constant. So even technology looks really scary if you look at that because you are giving it the worst-case scenario. If everything else is not allowed to change, so consumer demand, et cetera, et cetera, consumer preferences, consumer, et cetera, then what would be the impact of technology on jobs? And that's why you get that really dire picture. I hope that satisfies your question, but otherwise, let's discuss this further later. Okay? Anyone else?
So you showed the pattern that there is some task displacement within Asia, but that doesn't have to be driven by FDI, right? It could just be driven by exports and trade.
Well, it's not like you can, I don't think you can make this distinction because what you are going to see, you are going to see jobs that were there one moment and they are in another country in another moment. So when you kind of piece all the different evidence together, you think that FDI could be an important driver, but of course, doesn't mean that it's the only driver. But in this particular framework, all we can do is observe that between 2005 and 2015, a certain amount of jobs have, are there or were there, are not there anymore, or there are more jobs. So it could be, it's FDI, it could be also exports and other trends. I think it complains a little bit, but in the end, it allows you to.
It's not even showing up here. Do we have any technical assistance? Thank you. So this is the. I have the original PowerPoint here, too. Sorry for the. It's my own computer. Can I use my computer?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, sorry for the delay. So the work I want to present today is joint with some co-authors. A lot of us have been working together on this survey, the China Employer Employees Survey. Last time, we had the Jobs and Development Conference in Washington DC. I made a, I gave a talk where I presented some evidence that in China, unlike other places, there's been an increase in the routine tasks in a relative sense from the period of 2000 to 2015. And that was done using census data from China over various years and applying ONET task demand characteristics. And I mentioned very briefly this work, but today I just want to focus on this because this is all based on employer-employee survey data. And I'm gonna focus attention in particular on the role of globalization on the demand for tasks. And the unique feature, I think, of this data is that we have original survey data from workers and connected to the firms in which they work. So it's the first paper, of which I'm aware, that can connect in a very direct way the task demand of workers and the firm characteristics of their employers. So just to repeat as motivation, this is the picture of the change in employment shares based on the wage percentiles in the 2005 mini census for China. And basically, it's saying that you can see a growth in the middle of the income, of the wage distribution over time. These are for sub-periods. And except for the last period, 2010 to 2015, which is this orange line, where you kind of see there's relatively faster growth in the high-skill jobs. For the other periods, there's highest growth in the middle-skill jobs. So it's the opposite of the hollowing-out story for the US. And using the task categories that have been discussed a lot already, you can see that for China, it's these routine tasks. The blue line at the top is the non-routine manual. I'm sorry. The ones I wanted to look at is the, the non-routine cognitive are the blue and red. And you can see there's been kind of a downward trend and then a reverse from 2010 to 2015. But over the whole period, it's declined, whereas the routine cognitive is the light green, and that has increased steadily over time. This is just the average task content of jobs in China over this period. So why has middle-skill jobs increased in China? And this paper, I want to, in particular, focus on globalization. There are other, of course, important factors. And last time, when I talked about the census data, we pointed out that structural change actually can account for a lot of the increase in the routine jobs. Because of the shift to service sector jobs, many retail jobs in particular saw huge increase in employment, very routine-type tasks. And of course, there's technology and then the labor supply side factor, which has also been discussed. But these two factors are unlikely to explain it because they actually work in the opposite direction, right? Technology change and education expansion, which has occurred in a big way in China, should lead to relatively more non-routine cognitive tasks, not routine cognitive tasks. Okay, and this just to show you that it's really since China entered the DLT, there's just been a huge explosion of China's growth in exports. FDI has also been important. I think the data suggests that about 8% of Chinese workers in urban areas work in FDI firms. And in manufacturing, it's considerably more. So one of the difficulties of task measurement in China is lack of data. And so I've been involved in two data collection projects to try to collect new task demand data from worker surveys. So one I'm gonna talk about today is the China Employer Employees Survey. And we've done two waves in 2015 and 16 in two provinces, Guangdong and Hubei province. And this summer, we're gonna expand to five provinces. And the other survey project is a general urban household survey, which we call the China Urban Labor Survey, was conducted in 2006, where we added the World Bank STEP module to measure task demand. And that was the part of the data used by Pyotr in his morning presentation. And of course, there's the census data, which we've talked about. Okay, so if we think about the predictions about how, so very simply, I'm gonna, in this, in the rest, I'm gonna present some, I think, pretty compelling results, which is gonna suggest that globalization in China is actually contributing to the increase in routine tasks. Okay? It doesn't quite mesh with the previous presentation necessarily about global value chains, increasing non-routine cognitive, but I think it really depends how you frame it. This is really much more at the micro level, at the firm level. It's not really saying what's happening at the industry or national level. And so before I present those results, I just want to think, step back and think about the theory about what should we expect for FDI firms in China compared to domestic firms in China? And there's been some theoretical work and some empirical work, not so much on China, that suggests that foreign firms may be more likely to offshore production of tasks that are less abstract and more routine. Right? Of course, it's easier to train and supervise production from a distance if the tasks are very routine because you can kind of train people, you can give them manuals. It's something they can learn to do. It's easier, it requires less monitoring, and is easier to monitor than something that's very abstract. It's hard to teach and it's hard to monitor the quality from a long distance. So firms may, if they're gonna outsource, do FDI in another country, they may focus on activities that are relatively more routine. The other thing, of course, is a division of labor idea where home headquarters are often deciding, what should I do in the factory that I'm setting up? And what can I still do in the home office? So in Hong Kong in particular, it's very common for firms.